All right, we are ready to roll. Oh, we get all the. Get everybody's sound on. Now saying hello. All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board meeting of October 12th. We have everyone here. Megan Burge-McMichael, Courtney Freschad, Zach Burns, and Jim Salvi. First, I will ask if anyone has a public comment?
You're not using Zoom.
Yes, we are.
Oh.
I just turned it on now. We're on.
Just having a little technical blip here. Hold on one second. All right, there we go. Okay. So do we have anybody that wants to make a public comment? Don't see any hands raised or voices popping up, so we will move on. So there's a lot to announce tonight, so I'll try not to go too quickly. First, congratulations, well, thank you to our Police Department, and congratulations to all Stowe residents for another successful holiday weekend of apple picking, et cetera. And I just want to add, don't forget to tell your city friends that the apples are still on the trees. There are pumpkins in gourds and cider at all of our terrific farm stands and orchards. So send them our way. So. The Council on Aging has a survey available until the end of the month to get feedback on what residents would like to see from the Council on Aging Services. There's a link directly from the Stowe homepage. So as hopefully you all know, we have a town meeting coming up on October 30th. There's three meetings in the coming week that will be in relation to that. They all start at 7 o'clock and will all be held virtually. The first ones tomorrow night is a forum regarding the Stowe Acres proposal. Thursday, the Finance Committee holds their required public hearing. And next Tuesday night, the Planning Board holds their public hearing on the articles that they are sponsoring. Yes, did you say it? Get that wrong?
So the Planning Board's having two public hearings?
Two public hearings.
One on the 19th and one on the 26th.
Oh, okay.
On the articles. The 26th will only be the.
Recording in progress.
Will only be the industrial change is the 26th meeting. Other articles will be on the 19th.
Okay, thank you. The Highway Department paving has got a lot of interest, so know that the Highway Department is posting on their Facebook page, as well as on the website, for what sections are being paved when, so you can adjust your plans accordingly. Tomorrow, I understand there'll be a great road near Harvard Road and near the Wheeler-Witney neighborhoods. So that's just tomorrow. Don't know how long it'll last. Just if you're concerned about your drives, check the website or their Facebook page. The Board of Health is holding a flu clinic this Saturday, 10 to 12, at Pompo. There is online registration available. Walk-ins will be welcome if there are quantities available. And they also note that the regional Nishoba Associated Boards of Health have a number of clinics this month, so Stowe residents can go to any one of those. You can look on the website for that more information. And finally, Stowe is recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month this month with a number of events at the library, which I'll talk about a bit more later. The Council on Aging also has some events, and the Police Department has their pink badges still for sale to support American Cancer Society and.
Emerson Hospital.
Emerson Hospital. So if you're interested, and we're wearing pink in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I have two recognitions, but are there other announcements from anybody? Okay. So first, I want a huge thanks to Amanda Bennett, who has just stepped down as Chair or as President or Chair of the Stowe Food Pantry. She's carried it through many years, including its growth, and then its move to Pompo. And I know that she postponed her retirement from it because of COVID, so I'm really hugely grateful to her for all she's done for the Stowe Food Pantry. And then on a Saturday note, we lost George Faraka, who passed last Thursday. Though he was born in Maynard, he actually had lived in Stowe for decades and was both known as owner of Hudson Road Auto for many years and was also, for over 18 years, served on a Veterans Graves Committee. He served our country in Vietnam, and he was a dedicated part of our Stowe Memorial Day tradition. So our thoughts go out to his siblings, his children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. And services haven't been posted yet, but if you're interested, there is. Fowler has the obituary on their website. Any other recognitions or things from the Select Board? Okay. Well, first up, we have the really fun appointments from the Police Department. So Chief, I will let you take it from here. I believe.
So starting back in August, well, I should further back, since I was promoted from Sergeant to Chief, and Darren Thorne was promoted from Sergeant to Lieutenant, we've had two openings for two Sergeant positions. These are line supervisors that assist in running the department, the day-to-day operations. So we decided to continue on with that, those two positions. And back in August, we posted for those, and we set up a process, which the Board voted on what that process was as a matter of policy. So continuing with the policy, we, I put out to the department who would be interested in this process, who would want to go for the position, we had originally, we had four candidates that applied. Through the process, part of it was a cover letter, resumes, essay questions. We had a civilian interview panel, which had three civilians on it, as well as two department members. That was their first round of interviews. From there, they, the candidates went in front of three area police chiefs. The Hudson, Berlin, and Boxborough police chiefs donated their time and were able to meet with all the candidates, and they were ranked through each interview process. And then the Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator, and I met with the candidates on the final interview. Through all that whole process, the scoring was based on the written essays, that all the oral boards had their own scoring process, the amount of training that individuals had, their education, their experience, the seniority. And we did give points if they were a veteran. None of the three that were veterans. So tonight, through all the, through all the process, the whole process, the top two candidates that came out of this whole process was Cassandra Scott and Dave Gogan. I've known each of them for a long time. Cassie has been with us since 2013, and a detective since November of 2015. She holds two master's degrees, and as you are aware, last meeting or two meetings ago, she was given a letter of accommodation. Officer Gogan has been with us since 1989. That's okay. Since 1989, over 32 years. He's been a police officer for over 36 years. He's been our, at least for the past 10 years, has been our Senior Patrol Officer and someone who we've relied on heavily in the absence of having supervisors. He has two letters of commendations. And when I first started, he was one of my field training officers. So it's really exciting to see him move up through the ranks. Both of these are very excellent choices, and this is part of the recommendation that we were presenting. And I know Denise has more to say.
I wish I could tonight, but I just can't. I expressed my thoughts in a letter to you all.
And, okay. So I'm really excited to have both of them come on board, continuing our command structure. This is part of rebuilding our Police Department. This gets us one step closer. We'll be up to full complement. We are up to full complement now. We still have some vacancies to fill, because with your approval tonight, Cassie will be leaving the role of Detective, so that would, that's going to need to be, that role will need to be filled. And so I'll be back again. I'm really excited to have both of, both Cassandra and Dave here in front of you and their, to take on the role of being, you know, in charge of this Police Department, to really like look after the shifts and rely on them. So it's going to really help out our, really give us some accountability and oversight for our officers.
That's great. Comments or questions from the Board? Jim, you look like you have something.
You know, now she's starting to read my notes. She's right. I'm trying to be polite. You know, I just want to comment that I, I'm noting how you, in the past several months, have formalized this whole process and systematized it. Is that a word? Systematized it. And all of that gives all of us a lot of confidence, as well as the fact that the results of the process, I'm noticing, tend to be things that also just seem to make sense. These are very important positions. I've interacted with both of these officers. I'm personally very pleased at this. I know that, you know, the role of Sergeant is more than just the shift commander. You can be called upon at a moment's notice to take on far more responsibility. I think the town should have a lot of confidence in the two individuals that have been selected. Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I mean, so congratulations. Denise is short of voice tonight, so I thought I would read a little bit of what, because she did write some nice things, and I don't know. I mean, you guys probably will have seen it, but I want it for your families and et cetera. I won't read the whole thing, but I'd say regarding Detective Scott, she interviewed extremely well, clearly articulated her time with the department and how she would move the department forward with 21st century policing. It's evident that her education and the lengthy training she has undertaken has suited her well and prepared her for this role. And unrelated to her rank, and this is, of course, the part I wanted to add in the process, we are thrilled to be recommending the first woman in Stowe's history to hold a Command Officer position. It gives me great pleasure, and I will speak for Denise, but also for myself, to present her as a candidate for Sergeant. The second candidate, Officer, or Acting Sergeant David Gogan, sorry, has been with the Police Department, as Chief said, for 36 years, bringing a tremendous amount of experience. Having this command staff in place is imperative to the productive operations of the Stowe Police Department. As we work through the accreditation process and embrace the new police reform, having a Scott and Gogan in place will allow the Chief more flexibility with oversight, policy implementation, and overall management of the department. So I'm really excited to have you both step up. I mean, you bring so much interesting background and experience. Really grateful and thrilled. Thank you, Chief, for doing this.
No, no, thank you very much, and I'm looking forward, you know, I want their approval to get them, you know, get them up and running. And definitely, it's going to help a lot with the running of the department, so.
Awesome. So I, are you doing motions?
Making motions.
For your motion.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Detective Cassandra Scott to the position of Police Sergeant through June 30th, 2023, subject to reappointment thereafter.
Second.
All in favor? Very good, great, great. And next motion, please?
I also move to appoint Acting Sergeant David Gogan to the position of Police Sergeant through June 30th, 2023, subject to reappointment thereafter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Congratulations to you both.
Congratulations.
I didn't ask if you guys wanted to say anything. But I'm going to get a picture from this venue, just for, congratulations. And your daughter can come back in it, you know. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Nothing like the kids upstage everything.
I'm going to go and smile.
You go in the OJ. So Denise left me her notes. She does have no voice, so I'm going to speak for her. She just wanted to add a few things. So she, the flu clinic, I mentioned earlier, is this Saturday. This Thursday at 7 o'clock, the Library's hosting a Zoom with Sarah Thomas, an ultra marathon swimmer who holds the current world record for the longest continuous unassisted non-wetsuit swim done in current neutral conditions. She'll be speaking about her cancer and her determination to reach her goals. This is part of the Breast Cancer Awareness events this month. A reminder, also in the Breast Cancer Awareness mode, that we're inviting residents to offer words of support or to honor someone with our awareness and support trees in front of the town building at 380 Great Road. Folks will have the ability to write on pink ribbons and hang them so they can be on display for the month of October. There have been a lot of questions surrounding the Master's Academy at the former Bose site. This is the athletic complex and school that we spoke of the last meeting. On the Town Administrator's web page on the website, there's a tab on the left side where you find some information about their proposal and timeline, the whole. We have a deck that they presented of their proposal. Good news, we officially closed on the two lots at Halleck Point on October 5th and sold them for a combined $630,000, which is awesome. So that's thanks to everyone who worked really hard on that, including our Conservation Agent and the Stowe Conservation Trust and the Lake Boone Association. And finally, the fiscal year '22 free cash was certified this morning at $2,46,610. So someone from the Finance Committee can explain to the public what exactly that means. Jim, or Jim as former Chair of the Finance Committee, or Zach as the current representative of the Finance Committee?
Capital Planning.
Oh, you're on Capital Planning, sorry.
So, I mean, I'll take this tab. It's been a while. Free cash is when every year in the operating budget, there's always something left over, and that gets swept into one account and then certified by the state, but you're not double counting or something like that. And then is available for appropriation in any following year. When you add that to something that's called the stabilization fund, which is money that you intentionally set aside as a savings account, that becomes what we often call the stored assets of the town. I just think that it's remarkable that our free cash is at $2 million, considering that we're only a few years after having spent a very large chunk of it on the Lower Village Roadway project. And I think, you know, this is a good thing and a bad thing. People hear that number, they start thinking, oh, and they come up with ideas of spending. This is one thing that makes us financially the envy of a lot of our neighboring towns.
Great, thank you. I think that was quite clear.
Nicely done.
And hopefully, I got everything that Denise wanted us to talk about from her point of view? Anything else?
Yes, thank you.
All right, great. Hope you feel better.
Thank you.
So a first article for discussion is the Special Town Meeting warrant. So I think there's two parts. We're going to be talking later in the meeting with, I think, Jesse from Planning Board about their specific articles, and I think, but, so our two jobs on the warrant is to, if there's any comment about the order of things, or, and then if we want to vote on the, our position on those specific articles, so they can be included in the warrant when it goes to print.
May I add something else?
Sure, of course.
So we did clean up the warrant a little bit. So we've moved the marijuana bylaw article to before the industrial zone article, and we took out the tables in both of those articles and put one consolidated table in the back. So you still have the more draft version. And after tonight, I'll finalize the final version that we'll post. Everything else is the same, other than the order of those two. Just the marijuana bylaw went from 10 to, I think, 6 or 7.
Okay.
And then we just tidied up and took out all that extra charts that we really didn't need.
Okay, great, thank you. I had a few minor questions about a few, just in terms of some of the wording. Is it appropriate to ask those now, or should we? Well, I guess if we, if we're going to vote on them, we can discuss them as we go along. Were there any questions about the order of the warrant at this point?
No.
Okay, I think there was some balance between, you know, where to put Stowe Acres is maybe the big article around the other things. But hopefully, people won't leave too long. It's not a long meeting, hopefully, and hopefully, we'll get through it pretty quickly, so. So I would, I mean, always my preference has been that the Select Board take a vote on every article, and especially with a special meeting when it's, there's not that many, there's not a lot of routine ones. These are all, you know, coming up. So I would, I would, we are going to be talking to Jesse about some of the specifics on those articles, but, so if we want to hold off on voting until after we talk to him, we should do that. But I'll just start with, and I, since I have to look at two different places here, Article 1. That's the.
Unpaid bills.
Unpaid, oh, that's right, the unpaid bills. I guess maybe that's one, but, does anybody have a position on it? Should we just approve, vote to approve it?
We have a lot of choice on that one.
Exactly. We need to pay our bills.
I want.
$170.10.
I'm wondering if we just make motions on each of them to approve, and then.
Yes, I think that would be just the easiest.
And then if anybody has a, wants to disapprove, then we can.
Excellent suggestion.
That's a good idea.
I just.
When you say approve, you mean recommend.
Recommend, yes, recommend.
Recommend approval.
Will you make those motions?
Well, do you mind, Courtney?
I don't mind at all.
So Article 1.
Madam Chair, I recommend, I move that we recommend approval of Article 1 on the October 30th warrant.
Second. Second.
Any discussion?
What is MHQ? Does anybody know? I know, I can infer it's a.
Something Massachusetts Headquarters, maybe?
It's a vehicle mender of some kind, it doesn't matter.
Yes, am I right?
She's nodding her head.
Yeah, I was right.
All right, well done. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous, great. Article 2, the Barton Road Dam safety improvements, yes?
Madam Chair, I recommend, I move that we recommend approval of Article 2, the October 30th warrant.
Second.
My only question, Denise had talked about whether we, is this one of the ones we might be able to get some federal money? No. Can't ask her to talk.
She shook her head.
Um, no.
No, okay.
This will not be covered by ARPA funds. I did take off the PFAS article, because PFAS is a qualifying ARPA-funded project, but the Barton Road Dam does not qualify.
Okay, great. That's, that's clarified right there, thank you. Any other questions about number 2? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, great. So Article 3, Senior Property Tax Work Off?
Madam Chair, I move that we recommend approval of Article 3, the October 30th warrant.
Second.
My only question, is that option for proxy workers, is that new? So.
Yes, it is.
Great.
So part of these articles is, as national law changes, we have to re-accept the provisions to stay compliant. So we need to re-accept them, and yes, the proxy worker is now new. The next article is a completely new. We currently don't offer the veteran work off, so that will be a completely new project.
Awesome.
Madam Chair, my only comment on this and the next one, and Denise, you don't even have to respond, I just want to point it out grammatically, the second sentence is not a sentence. It gets the point across, absolutely, but just in the sentence, I'll just leave that there.
That's right, it's more a semicolon, whatever. Okay. Point taken, thank you. Any other comments on Article 3? That said, all in favor of supporting this article?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, great. And Article 4?
Madam Chair, I move that we recommend approval of Article 4, the October 30th warrant.
Second.
Any discussion for the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, great, thank you. Article 5.
Madam Chair, I move that we recommend approval of Article 5, the October 30th warrant.
Second.
Any discussion? I just want, I had asked just to clarify that in the language where it transfers to Recreation or Conservation, that that's part of the package with both state grants and CPC funds. I just, I thought in case that we, that there'll be a time to develop a plan for how to use that land later, that the public will have input into, so.
Madam Chair, this one, and this one in particular, I wanted to say, I really like this language and the way that this was done. I know last year, the Finance Committee had quite extensive discussion of one of the articles about, that had sort of the way that we needed to map it out. And I thought this structure was amazing to see it sort of update and was clear to me. And hopefully, this, the Finance Committee will note this, as I think we had too much discussion last year on what that was structured like, but it was good discussion. And so this was much clearer in how this would play out, and so I wanted to comment. Thank you, Denise, for that.
Great.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just one thing, particularly if we're going to make recommendations on every article, which I actually disagree with you on, but for something like this, who cares? There should be one or two where we actually say something more than just the Select Board recommends.
Yes.
This would definitely be one of them.
This would definitely be in that category.
Maybe at the next meeting, or the meeting before town meeting.
We can develop more of that.
Yeah, or actually, maybe the next one, so that whoever's going to say it can think about it.
I think that's a really good point, that some of them do require us to say, just the way the Finance Committee sometimes says more.
Right.
Not always, but in this case, would be particularly, okay. So I'll make it sure I note that we come up with some language for next meeting. Okay, any other comments on this one? We've discussed it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous support. Great. So I think we'll wait on six, let's see, six, seven? Well, I guess seven is considered a planning board as well, right? So all the rest of them are essentially our planning board.
Do you want me to see if Jesse can jump on now?
If he can, or we can just hold off until, I mean, we only have one other thing to do, so maybe you should just check in with him, and we'll come back to. Let me see if Dan is on. Dan is on the, on the line. Should we jump to Dan's while we're waiting for Jesse? If that's okay? So, hi, Dan. Are you there? Yeah, you're there.
I am, hi.
Hi. So we're going to jump to you, we're going to talk to Planning Board after we finish with you. So my understanding, the reason we have this in front of us is the signed disclosure form is because you sit on the Recreation Committee, Commission, but you also are proposing to do some paid work for them, is that right?
That's correct.
And so because of that, we need to explicitly give an exemption that says we all understand this, and that the language basically says we've received the disclosure, we understand the municipal employee participates or has official responsibility for activities that made the contract. So we are approving that exemption for Dan as part of the Recreation Commission. Dan, why don't you, can you tell us a little bit more about what the work is you expect to be doing?
Yes, it's a long list of projects that Laura has backlog in, all the parks in Stowe, you know, down to the miniscule things like picking up trash, but also projects like picnic table repair, stuff that's been what you might call deferred maintenance, and upkeep of things like fencing and pine bluffs, and gravel management, wood chip management. The list goes on and on. I, I know there's a list that she has already on spreadsheet, but it's just being, you know, continually added to. And I, as a neighbor, I've noticed some things that, you know, Laura has missed, and I'm, I plan on adding them to the list and getting them, you know, into consideration.
Okay. Anybody on the Board have a question or anything to clarify? Yes, Jim?
Hi, Dan.
Hi.
I do appreciate you stepping forward to do this. I've got some questions, though. You know, I don't take lightly things like this where the person who's exercising oversight, sort of exercising oversight of themselves. Can you just tell me a few things? Has this been done before? I know Board members have done work, but were they paid to do it?
Yes, there has been precedent. John San Germano had a similar deal, I'm going to guess, about eight years ago, where he was willing and able and did quite a few projects in addition to his volunteer work. And that's kind of the mold I'm in, is that I do some things anyway. And now that I'm retired, I have more time to be more, and I thought this would be a good position.
Okay. So are these supposed to be discrete projects? Are these supposed to be discrete projects? Or will you be the main maintenance guy for the rec fields?
Oh, these are specific projects, like a contractor. I will not be an employee of the Town of Stowe. That's not how Laura pitched it to me. It was that I would be working on, on a project-by-project basis. So. working on, on a project-by-project basis, so. Uh, so John, John did things like a lot of vegetation management, weed control, uh, tree removal, tree, tree work, um, some of the docks at pine bluffs and.
Dan, was there a, a process by how you got selected? Was there a posting, was there an RFR or anything, but did other people apply?
This is, uh, Laura's, Laura will go and, and hire people, uh, I, I believe that's in her job description, to hire people as needed. And I'm not involved in the hiring at all of anyone, but no one has hired, in fact, even her assistant, at this point, is being hired by her directly, not us. So I've never been engaged in any of the hiring.
Okay, I, I understand that.
Yeah.
And I think my last thing is, um, I take it, I assume you're gonna have to recuse yourself from some votes, right? On the properties that you're working on, correct?
Yeah, I, absolutely, I, I can't think of a single time where I have, uh, been involved in a, you know, a decision that came down to, you know, who does what, and, and how it's done, and when it's done. You know, these projects are just obvious, you know, they're just stuff that has to be done anyway, and, uh, you know, here I am, so. You know, if it, if it appear, if, if there's ever, if there's ever a situation where I need to recuse myself, I'm, I'm going to.
And I take it Laura's not on this call, right?
I don't see her.
She's not, she's not.
All right, and one small question for the town administrator, is, is Dan right that he won't be considered a town employee? That doesn't sound correct to me, but.
I don't think he'll be, like, with full benefits, I think is what he meant.
Say, say that again, I'm sorry Denise.
It's a question for Denise. You're unmute.
You're on mute.
You're on mute Denise.
Can you unmute her?
Well, he will be over twenty hours late, maybe, oh. She can't unmute.
It's not unmuting.
Oh, I didn't mean to.
I don't know why you're, I can't unmute her from.
Sorry, we're having technical difficulties with Zoom right now, um.
Sorry.
So, I'm sorry, what was your question?
Will he not be a town employee?
If, if, if he is doing a project-specific tasks, then he can do them as a contractor. If Laura is overseeing him and managing his daily tasks, he is an employee.
Okay.
So if it's project-specific, then he can do this thing, um, but if it's, if it, there's oversight needed, or she's instructing him what to do, where to go, what tasks to do and when, then that's an employee.
Okay.
So, I, I do appreciate Dan stepping forward, and there's a lot to be said for him, as he said, he's just there, he's, he's ready to do it. I just, I'm not gonna make a big thing out of it, personally, I'm not comfortable with this. I get, I get queasy when I see board members doing the work, and the lack of anything that resembles a competitive process for me right now, um, is a red flag.
And I had asked similar questions of Denise earlier about, and she said it's small amounts of money, which is one of the reasons she felt like it wouldn't hit some level of concern. I mean, he is a subcontractor, essentially.
Yeah.
And, and the budget comes through Laura, I mean, as, as part of her budget, but.
Yeah, no, I get it, and I don't mean to make a big, I also didn't like the fact that apparently it's happened before, and I've been on the board for a long time, and I will tell you, we've never signed off on one of these things before.
Right.
Uh, and you have never seen it, yeah.
Um, and I'm, I'm wary about creating.
Press on.
Press it.
Yeah, I wish the Recreation Director were here to address some of my concerns rather than Mr. Nicholson, so.
Well, we can.
I don't want, if the, it sounds like the four of you are ready to go, and why make, i- i- if that's true, why make
Okay.
Mr. Nicholson wait, and I've just got my own personal squishiness.
Right.
If there's any trouble, there's gonna be trouble.
Mr. Burns?
I actually, uh, before voting, would love to, uh, table this, uh, for two weeks from now, and ask that Laura show, because I, I would like to hear uh, her answers to the questions about sort of what this process looks like, just before we do set a precedent if we are to vote yes, uh, that we actually have undertaken diligence with her. So I actually, I think contrary to Mr. Salvi, I, I would prefer that we, we table this, and, and I would support that motion, because although I think it would be very helpful to see our parks, uh, and these tasks be undertaken, I think we owe it to the town, uh, folk to, um, ask our, our Recreation Director some questions about the hiring process to ensure we're, we're doing it properly.
Sure, I'm in favor of full transparency on this.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that as well, yep, yep, absolutely.
Do we need to have a vote to table it?
I think we do, yeah.
I think so, yeah.
Someone makes a motion?
Yes, Madam, Madam Chair, I move we, um, table the, um, item pertaining to Dan Nichol, Daniel Nicholson's, um, disclosure form, until our next meeting.
Second.
Nope, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. So sorry Dan, but we'll, uh, we'll get back to you in two weeks.
Okay, and, uh, just for the record, I, I think, um, at this point in my life, I'm ready to, uh, you know, choose, choose the job aspect of the, of the option, you know, and drop, and step down, um, if it's necessary
Oh, okay.
From the Rec Commission, it's just not, um, as appealing to me at this point, you know, I, I think I'm ready to move on.
Okay.
So.
If I can, why don't you, Dan, why don't you wait a couple of weeks before you make that decision?
Don't, don't make any decision too.
We just got a few things we gotta ask, and it's certainly possible that we're gonna hear answers that are gonna make it just fine, okay? Appreciate you saying that, but, but hold off.
Yeah.
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 All right, thank you Dan.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Hi Jesse, thanks for joining us. Let's see if we can get him off of the mute. Denise was having trouble unmuting herself, so we'll see if Jesse can unmute himself. I don't, is there something I'm supposed to be able to do, aren't I? Oh, there we go.
We good?
Yep, we're good, excellent, great.
All right, sorry about that one.
No, that's okay. Um, so, yeah, so we basically, we were gonna vote on our support of the various articles or not, uh, but we figured we'd talk to you first. So, um, can we just go through all, I think there's four, one, two, three, five? Five that are essentially all yours? We, we already supported Article Five, we don't have to talk about that. Um, so Article Six is the clarification on the sign by law.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
So, um, yeah, do you want me to just give you kind of the, the Cliff Notes?
Sure.
Yes.
Um, yeah, so, uh, recently, as in, I think a couple of months back, there was a, uh, a complaint that was sent to the Building, uh, Commissioner regarding enforcing the illuminated sign portion, uh, prohibition in the sign by law. Um, there was a fairly big outcry among some of the businesses in Lower Village. Um, and so, the Economic Development Commission sent a letter to the Planning Board asking them to figure out if they could come up with a targeted, um, response, and they gave some recommendations in their letter. And so the Planning Board put together, um, this, uh, zoning by law amendment, to basically, um, in so many words, kind of take the, you know, uh, take the temperature down on this particular issue, and, um, allow people, allow businesses the ability to have an open sign in their business without having a zoning by law violation. And the purpose here, the, the overall goal is to basically, um, do this kind of stopgap measure to, um, take a little bit of the pressure off of these businesses, and then over the next year, as we look at the Lower Village zoning, be able to, um, think about signing bylaws in a broader sense. So, we know we couldn't do a full overhaul in the time, in, under the kind of time sensitivity that this issue was creating, so this was just a, a quick fix.
Great. Well, I totally appreciate that you were willing to move this quickly on something that, you know, came up really just in the last month, so appreciate that. Uh, my one question, just since, since we are updating the, the particularly, the illuminated part, when it says moving parts, I, I thought of signs that say open and they spell the letters out, like O-P-E-N, is that considered a moving, I don't know actually if anybody uses that currently down in Lower Village, but is that considered a moving part?
Um, no, the way I would read it, I would, a moving part is more like one of those, like inflatable signs, that's like a big balloon that's constantly getting blown up and dancing around, or um, more of like a big flag-type sign, or something.
Something else?
Yeah, definitely not, uh, not just, um, the actual lighting of the sign, I wouldn't read it that way.
Okay. Okay.
Um, I don't, I don't think the Building Commissioner was reading it that way either, but that's the nature of zoning, you're always parsing words, but I, I don't think so.
Okay. Um, did anybody else have questions about the, the, um, sign by law amendment?
No.
No? Jim?
Just one brief statement, I think kudos to our new building inspector for pursuing enforcement which had been neglected for a while, and directly bringing this issue to a head that had to be brought to a head.
Yep.
He, it, they may not realize it, but he is the best friend of the businesses in Lower Village that want, that have open signs.
Yep, yep, great, absolutely. Um, so, just to keep us in the flow here, why don't we take a motion to, um, for this article, which is Article Six?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend approval of Article Six of the October thirtieth warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, great, thank you. Uh, Article Seven, so this is the one around the Bose property, and the addition, I'll, I'll let you do the Cliff Notes again, that worked.
Great, yeah, I get, I think I'm looking at a different warrant, I had Article Seven as the, um, the marijuana district, but I will just scroll down to the Bose one.
Yeah, that's right, Denise had just said they got.
Oh, yeah, moved up to, because I want to move up to before it was filed.
Okay.
Okay.
And the final version.
Well, no problem, okay, um, just bear with me here, this one, this thing. Okay, so, um, yeah, so the Bose article, um, so, I think the best way to describe this is, um, Bose obviously, um, several months ago, actually over the winter, stated that they were getting ready to sell that property, they were moving all of their folks over to the mountain in Framingham. Um, they went through a bid process, inviting all of these different bidders to come forward. The Masters Academy, um, as we all know now, um, came forward and kind of provided the most compelling case for, um, purchasing that property, and um, kind of being the next, uh, landowner for, you know, for as long as, as long as we'll know it. Um, and, um, so, basically, in our bylaw right now, in the industrial district, um, there was not an allowance for the kind of for-profit school that, um, that they were describing in this academy. Um, and so, you know, when we were first thinking about what this really meant, we were um, recounting all of the, the questions and the interest we were getting from other, um, industrial, um, basically, um, industrial-style businesses, so we had been talking with folks that wanted to do, uh, flex warehousing space, they were looking at doing distribution. They were looking at very different kinds of uses than what this, um, sports academy would essentially be. And what we were saying back to them is like, yeah, we get it, we know that it's owned industrial, but you know, during that time, it was, you know, since that time, this whole neighborhood has grown up around it, the idea of doing large-scale distribution out of the site. Even though on a map it looks close to four ninety-five and everything looks like it would work, it's just really not suitable anymore. So, when this came around, I think the Planning Board understood what, A, could be, could be built there, um, what the original build-out of Bose was going to be, and they really saw this, um, this proposal as being a net benefit specifically for the neighborhoods that are closest. Um, not to mention some of the broader benefits it could have, and stuff. So, um, they're willing to support an article to, um, change, it's a very simple article, it just changes our table of principal uses. Um, and it allows these types of schools, academies, campus-style places, um, by special permit. So, they would still go through a public hearing, they would still be subject to a discretionary permit, there would be conditions, I am sure, on how the operation, um, you know, functioned and, and looked and all of that. Um, but nonetheless, it is something that is now able to be permitted, whereas before it could not. Um, so, there is one other, um, aspect of this, uh, bylaw change, and that is, um, obviously probably important to this board, um, being that it would be subject and contingent upon a, uh, a development agreement, um, signed by the Board of Selectment. Um, and so, um, you know, the understanding there is that in a lot of these bigger-type, uh, developments, and, um, but one of the things that could be really beneficial for the town was knowing that if we were going to change our zoning, that we were not gonna have uh, the property flipped in some way that we weren't considering, and that we would really have some sort of, um, you know, concrete um, assure, you know, some surety from the, uh, developer and the applicant themselves that they were going to build what they said that they were going to build. And a development agreement just allows the town to really come up with, um, some mutually beneficial, um, ideas and benefits and arrangements, um, beyond what zoning can typically do. So, you know, if, I know that, you know, in one of our initial meetings, they expressed some interest in maybe thinking about how they could partner with the town to improve town, uh, the community, the Stowe Community Park there and its operation, and those kinds of things that are a little outside of zoning are what a development agreement can help with. So, basically, the way this bylaw is written, it says, you know, even though we're changing our zoning, uh, to allow this by special permit, there's still this development agreement contingency, and it's kind of a belt and suspenders approach, so.
Great.
I think that gets everything.
Any questions? No, that's great.
In what order would the special permit and development agreement go?
Special permit goes first, I think.
Special permit, then the development agreement, or vice versa?
Well, I think the actual, um, approval of the special permit is contingent on having an agreement in place. So we'll check that as we move in and then.
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause that's really, you know, and that really gets to the whole, you know, typically, it's, it's often the case with big uses and, and um, that the Planning Board would have a whole, like, you remember the Act of the Dull Neighborhood District that we just went through, the overlay district? You know, there's a whole, a whole scheme there for deciding how that gets developed and everything. Um, this, this use is actually, they're, what they're considering is somewhat similar to the Bose's initial build-out, and so, again, this is kind of a little bit of a belt and suspenders, the fact that the board is willing to use its just kind of boilerplate special permit process, the development agreement adds a little more, um, assurance in there that this is gonna go the way the towns expect.
Article, number fourteen on you, on the article, explains that, the order of, uh, development agreement and special permit.
Oh, I see.
Madam Chair, do you need a motion?
Yes.
Is this?
Uh, I don't know, you have someone online that wants to comment?
Oh.
Oh, sorry, didn't see that.
And I know it's not Katie, so it has to be Mark.
That's right. Sure, yep, Mark, you have a question?
Yes, may I speak?
Sure.
Okay, uh, my question about this, the, the Bose thing, of course, influx of seven hundred kids into the schools, into, into the town in the next few years is, I think it's an awful lot, that's really not my concern, is that a lot of these schools, they go to a nonprofit. Uh, is there some kind of thing in the, uh, the bylaw that says it has to stay as a for-profit, uh, organization, rather than go to a nonprofit? I mean, all of a sudden, we allow this, they put seven hundred kids into, into, into the area, and then they say, well, gee, uh, we're gonna change our, our religious standing into a uh, nonprofit, and then the town has something in here that's not gonna make any income, and it's not really into the benefit of the town. And it's just a question I want to run by you guys. Thanks.
Thanks. Jesse?
Yeah, I would say that's exactly why it's, uh, helpful to have a development agreement in place. I mean, those are the kinds of things that we can say that the, the Board of Selectment, or, I'm sorry, the Select Board could have, um, some sway over. They could state that, you know, this is contingent upon knowing that this is gonna continue to be a for-profit use and not some, um, you know, Dover exemption in the future. So, um, I, I think that's why council suggested that route.
Uh, I will just add that, um, Planning Board's having the hearing, this is the one that's gonna be on the twenty-sixth, is that right? Right before town meeting, Jesse? So if people have questions specifically, I mean, this is really just changing our bylaw, but, um, specific questions on the proposal will be addressed also, um, on the twenty-sixth, at the Planning Board hearing. Any other questions? Anybody from the board?
Is this Article Ten now?
Um, so this is now Article?
No, so this is now Article Eight. It's just, the articles moved down, one and number ten moved into seven.
Okay, right, okay.
Oh, all right.
I'm sorry, did you make a motion yet?
Not yet.
So, would you like to make a motion, Mr. Salvi?
Madam Chair, I move that we recommend approval of Article Eight of the October thirtieth warrant.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous, great, thank you Jesse. Okay, so then, the next one, I'm just gonna say the next one, which I believe is now Article Nine, is the one around special permits around side, changes around the sidewalk requirement. Is that a bad, is that a bad, I don't know if that's a good summary or not, but, yeah.
This bylaw change is just one that, um, I've had hanging around for a long time, and, that we've been wanting to fix. And basically, right now, all new special permits require that a sidewalk be built along the front edge of the property. Um, and the way that the bylaw was worded often got the Planning Board and the property owner. Um, and the way that the bylaw was worded often got the planning board and the property owners into situations that neither really liked. Um, requirements to build sidewalks in places they really weren't appropriate or didn't connect to anywhere else. Um, you know, just, it, it was very rigid, and so what we did instead here was we offered, um, just, um, some flexibility and criteria for the planning board to allow for different kinds of things to be proposed. So, we tied it to our complete streets, uh, policy rather than to just sidewalks. So, it could be improvements to sidewalks, it could be crosswalks, it could be a range of different kinds of benefits. Um, it could be the submission of an easement or a fee in lieu, or some partial fee in lieu. Really just giving the planning board flexibility, because every one of these situations is different, and when you match that with a rigid bylaw, it just makes life difficult for everyone, so, just, uh, along the way to fix through our bylaw.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, so do I understand that Jesse done that, um, it would be some requirement in a development for some improvement? Or payment in lieu, or, or, um, or offer in, in lieu of just a sidewalk, but so something, a lot, so there's still a requirement?
Yep.
It's just a much broader range of choices.
It would still, it would still help maintain the original, um, expectation that a sidewalk or other complete street improvement should be built along, um, the frontage. It would still reference the planning board's policy, which, um, gives you the kind of the, the cost of what the fee in lieu should be depending on the linear fee of frontage. Um, but it, what it would do is, in instances where, um, rather than just be able to take a fee in lieu or have to build a sidewalk, there's just a few other criteria that the board could find and then say, you know, well, maybe, um, half a fee in lieu and an easement for the future, um, for that sidewalk is appropriate. Um, and it allows the property owner to basically choose from a menu of options to propose to the planning board depending on the specific situation. For instance, we've had scenarios where their frontage is all along a wetland resource area, and no one really wants the sidewalk though. Um, so, you know, there are those instances that, you know, and there's just been a number over the time that I've been here that are kind of head-scrappers, and we're hoping this, um, allows everybody to think creatively about the solution.
That's great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I move that we recommend approval of Article Nine of the, of the October thirtieth, uh, warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, great. Um, next one, uh, the, uh, active adult neighborhood clarifications?
Yes, this one's, um, pretty simple, we had, um, basically, I was telling somebody that I was actually fairly impressed that after writing that entire bylaw and getting it all done, that we only had this one small change to have to make. Um, so, I'm fairly proud of that, but basically, all it is, is that, um, we had a couple of the definitions of our floor areas, um, mixed up. And when we were talking with the applicant who owns the lands that we are likely to see a, a proposal for, um, they recognized that gross floor area and regular floor areas defined in our zoning bylaw were a little bit at conflict in the bylaw. So, it just kind of created a, just inconsistency. We all knew what we wanted to say, so we're just basically going back and fixing it so that it is consistent.
Okay, okay, any questions? Uh, motion please, Mr. Salvi?
Madam Chair, I move that we recommend approval of Article Ten of the October thirtieth warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, and the last one, which is now Article Seven, uh, the clarification on the marijuana, whatever we call it.
Yeah, this was, uh, this was actually just pretty boring, it's been on the books for awhile. If anybody who was lucky enough to be on the Select Board back in twenty eighteen when we went through the whole, uh, you know, um, registered marijuana establishment overlay district, uh, you recall that there was, um, there had to be a vote at town meeting, and then it had to be followed up at the ballot, and there was all these different formulas of the way that things had to be, um, confirmed in order to actually be the law of the land and stow regarding what types of uses we would allow, um, in the marijuana district. Well, all of that is obviously all played out, and so there was just a bunch of language regarding different contingencies, and actually, a bunch of uses referenced in the bylaw that just simply aren't allowed in stow, and so we thought, we were actually, we've been getting calls and people asking us like, to explain what the bylaw is really saying, so we thought it was time to clean it up, reduce it by a couple of pages, and, um, and that same goes for the moratorium that, um, somehow was just still on the books, so that can come off as well.
Okay. Any questions? Still disappointed, but, okay, I'll take a, a motion, the money we could have made, okay, moving on. Mr. Salvi?
Madam Chair, I move that we recommend approval of Article Seven of the October thirtieth warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, great. I think that's everything, right, Jesse, was there any, oh, no, then, um, you did have the other article on, I mean, item on our agenda, which was about the Hammerhead Lot Special Permit? Since we have you, that's not part of the town meeting warrant, but I think this is something separate we're being asked to approve? Is that?
Um, I don't think so, unless I'm just, unless I'm missing something, so what, what is that property related to?
I, I've got to get to the, uh, it's Barton Road, fifty-seven Barton Road, petition for a Hammerhead Lot Special Permit and Site Plan Approval?
Yeah, so I'm sorry, I think that whatever document it got to you might have just had something else for the planning board attached to it. That's a subject of a public hearing that's coming up on the twenty-sixth. Um, that, you're probably looking at the notice of public hearings.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, we, we just had to double up on that night, so yeah, that, you don't have to, uh, be concerned with that one. Unless you're interested, you can weigh in at the.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Salvi?
I think I know what happened there, the, the planning board's typical memo on everything.
Yep.
Mentions the word comments, please offer comment, and that prompted our alert staff to put it on our agenda, which is, which is good and bad, I mean, I don't think we need to take up time on this Hammerhead Lot, but, um, there have been big developments in town that the Select Board has not applied to. I don't know that we would have had anything useful to say, but I always thought, especially when I was chair, that we should have at least spent ten minutes on it.
Yep.
Um, I certainly would trust the town administrator and our staff to know what's important and what's not, especially after talking to the town planner.
Yep.
So, I'd just like to.
Okay.
Perhaps offer that.
Okay.
Got it, okay.
But I'm hearing that we don't have to worry about it tonight.
Jim, that was helpful, I think so, you, you got the notice for comments on that.
Yeah.
Good call, Jim.
Okay.
Okay, well, thanks, Jesse, I appreciate you leaving your meeting to come to our meeting.
Yeah, yeah, from, thank you, I'll be right back.
Thank you.
Jesse.
And, uh, just a reminder again to people listening that, um, planning board has hearings on all these articles on both, um, October nineteenth for the smaller ones and October twenty-sixth for the, uh, educationally used one. If I got that right, yeah, so, okay, um, next on our agenda is, um, the Nishoba Regional Agreement Amendment.
May I, may I ask a question?
Of course.
So, you voted on each individual article?
Oh, and then we need to vote on the whole one, thank you, I thought of that when I, Jesse was talking and I forgot to go back to it, yes. So now, um, no, yes, Ms. Freshel, will you make that motion, please?
I move to accept the warrant for the October thirtieth, twenty twenty-one special town meeting, dated October twelfth, twenty twenty-one, pending legal edits by a town council that may change the wording, but not the intent of the articles.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous, thank you. Okay, all right, so, now the next item is, uh, the appointment to, so the, Nishoba Regional School Committee has created a, an advisory committee to look at making amendments to the regional agreement. Um, and they are asking for a representative of each town, either finance committee or Select Board, um, one from each town to be on that committee. So, I don't, I haven't had any conversation with finance committee, I, I would expect if no one here wants to do it or feels that finance committee would be better represented, um, we can talk to them, but, uh, any thoughts on this, the meeting times they propose are from late October to early January? Denise, I don't know if you had anything to add, but, um, I think it's fairly clear what needs to happen. Any thoughts on this?
I would just recommend if there is a Select Board member, uh, because they will be talking about stuff that's, um, more than just financial components of the regional agreement, so I think it might help to have someone on this board participate.
Yep. I, I will say, as a former school committee member, I would be willing to do this if no one else wants to do it.
Yeah, I would be fine with that, as a parent of kids in the school system, I, I don't want to do it, actually.
Any thoughts on, I mean, I could also see, you know, a lawyer might be good to be on it, but, you know, other hands have been raised for other things, I don't want to overcommit, you guys, any thoughts?
I will move to nominate Ellen Sturges to serve on the, uh, don't tell me, uh, I want on the R A A A C Subcommittee, uh, not Subcommittee.
Not Subcommittee, Advisory Committee.
Of the Nishoba Regional School Committee.
I'll second that.
Does it, we have to put for a term expiring, or does it matter?
Well, I, I would, I guess we, if we want to say a term expiring June thirtieth, there was.
Is it June?
Well, they think it's going to be done by the end of January, but I assume it has to go to.
Oh, yeah.
Town meeting, so, um, I would just say June thirty seems like a safe.
Twenty twenty-two? Yeah, I know.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Ellen.
I guess I'll see. Thank you.
I apologize for usurping the motion, I just wanted to get the spotlight off the lawyer. Yep.
Well done.
Okay, so, um, we're on to the strategic planning session, and, um, as I had asked Joyce to include, I thought we should, we, we put it off a few times talking about our goals, we, we gave Denise her goals, um, and went back to our notes from our planning meeting in July, and we had come up with some, but I thought, um, given that time has passed and we've been doing some things, that people would have things to add, or, or perhaps focus on. Um, I think our list got pretty long at that meeting and then got, we pushed it all to Denise's work. So, um, I just, I think tonight it would be great just to put out, you know, what people's ideas are for what they'd like to see us be working on, you know, our own goals through the end of our term, which is to say June of the next, you know, the election. I mean, I could start, I, I, um, still want to update our antiquated policies, the ones that aren't relevant anymore, as, maybe some Select Board ones as well as general ones. Um, I still, uh, we've talked about Lower Village a lot, and I think promoting businesses generally, but including Lower Village, promoting affordable housing, um, and improving communication between boards, which was also something I brought up back in July, I think. Um, but, so those are mine, but I'd love to hear what other people had on their lists, if you came up with specific things or responses to those, whichever.
I would, um, I would say that, I know it's, um, it wouldn't be a completion item at all this year, but adding to your focus on Lower Village, I would like to include in the conversations, thinking about water. And that's not just thinking about water, it's thinking about funding water, and how to approach it so that, so that it can move because it's stuck. I think, you know, generally, I'm interested in how we can fund things that are stuck. And so, another one that comes up for me is town hall, and, um, you know, that, that needs to be presented to the town in a way that it, it has appeal, hopefully, but, um, I would like some discussion of bonding CPA funds, um, just to happen, because I think, we'll see where we can go with that.
Yeah, and I think the larger, the sort of all the capital items coming down, and how do we fix that dilemma? Right, there's a lot that we'd like to do, and water being a whole category almost on its own. Yeah, great. Yeah.
I, I like where you're going with this, and I was in the same direction, uh, that you were about, um, I think there's a lot of anxiety in town about hearing all of these really big projects, hearing a dam having issues, a potential new high school, what that timeline may look like, knowing that there's other capital projects that have been on the calendar for some time. And I think we would do ourselves a really good service of trying to bring all of that together and start talking about funding, having a concerted effort with capital planning and finance committee to work this through, connecting through to Denise's capital outlay plan, uh, so that way, we're truly trying to connect these and provide the prioritization of these to the town, and undertake the really tough work of, of explaining that and seeing how we can maybe creatively have discussions of funding things that may go beyond making sure the dam isn't going to collapse, and trying to keep our roads going well, and, and, and all these other things that I think we're going to have to address. Um, so I, to me, that's become my number one issue, uh, because I think, uh, it, it's, it's to the point where, you know, we have to start addressing it and figure out what that game plan's moving forward. We're, I think, going to be reactionary, and I'd rather be proactive on some of these as much as we can. The second one is similar to the Lower Village, and I've been, I've been thinking a lot about the high tension meetings we have, planning board has, other boards have. And I think I sort of add on to the Lower Village project of be a good neighbor report, and truly figuring out how we're going to have businesses next to residential neighborhoods. I think it's something that us and the planning board should think about together, and I include just these two because I know that there are interests outside of that that I think should be weighed in on the two boards that have to ultimately make a zoning decision and a, and a strategy or an approval decision. And I think we really have to start addressing this, because if we don't, I think we're going to lose good businesses, and if we don't, we're going to continue with having very frustrated town folk not understanding why certain things are happening in their backyards. And so I was, you know, really calling it to be a good neighbor report, because I think there's something about recognizing that that's the theme and how we want to do it, and, and with the Lower Village, I think is one aspect, but obviously, we've seen this extend beyond Lower Village with some other businesses in town that I think we have to take very seriously and, and find a way forward. Uh, so I'm not sure if that's part of the Lower Village project, if it's a sort of a broader question, since as we start talking about zoning and then start thinking about new things coming into town, we may start to see these boundaries open up even more and thus having more frustration, and I think it would be very great if we could figure out what that looks like. So, I'd like to sort of extend that Lower Village and commercial stuff and really think about what that looks like with, with our, our colleagues up in the planning board, uh, and trying to have some way of, of navigating that, so those, those are my, my top two that I have, I have down, which I think matches sort of thematically what you both have said.
Jim?
Two main things, um, one, I think is already being worked on, kind of an entertainment policy, I know the town administrator is already working on that. A subcategory of that is a, a more formal policy on one-day liquor licenses. We've had an unusual respite from one-day liquor license applications, but, um, compared to our neighboring towns, we have a terribly informal approach to them. Uh, you know, I don't even, I don't know that we've ever said no, or why we would say no under our existing, and, uh, it's, that scares me a little bit. Second is maybe a little more important, and, um, it goes right to all the capital things that my colleagues have talked about. Our new super, our, our new highway superintendent has a very different approach to certain things, we've, we've commented on it before. He's much more systematic about replacing things and replacing equipment and, and repaving roads than his predecessors were. And I really, really applaud him for this. But because it is such a departure from what the town has done, and because there is a significant associated cost, I think there's a policy dimension to this. He then implements it, absolutely, and I, again, I applaud him for thinking this way. But I'd like to see us get involved in that. The hit on the capital plan from this stuff will be tremendous. And related to that, sidewalks.
Was wondering if that was going to be.
Yeah.
And, and I'm not, again, one of those things that you can say I'm pro sidewalk until you see what it costs, and then it just makes it a closer question.
Right, right. Well, and always the issue, which ties back to highway, is like, are we going to clear them in the winter at that cost? So, which has always been, was one of the previous issues, right? That's why we didn't call them sidewalks, because that would mean we'd have to keep them clear.
Three season by way. I think along with that, it would be nice to have some numbers, like, I just, I feel. Like, I just, I feel like it's always been so anecdotal, like, well, we just can't do it. Well, tell me what it costs then. Like, I'd like to see that.
I believe he has numbers. He specifically has numbers on replacing the sidewalks that are in bad shape and clearing. And I would love to see him present that sometime before the snow flies, where we can count, just like we can count on, you know, the Christmas season coming and we can count on questions about snow clearers. That thing about what we call it, I had actually never heard that until recently. I think there is a legal dimension to it. There is a case from two thousand eight or twenty ten, I don't remember, and I, there was a brief moment when I knew what the case said and understood it, and that moment has passed. I would like to get Town Council's opinion or at least a blurb on what are the legal parameters here. But it is definitely part of the issue.
But I think it is. I mean, it sort of almost goes to what Jesse was just saying about with cleaning up the bylaw languages. You know, we want something to make it more accessible for people. I mean, that was always the issue. That's why that first bylaw was written, even if it was written poorly, right? But it was the idea like, if we, if we start moving, then we can start seeing more sidewalks and then eventually they'll connect. But it's never been a huge priority and it got better. I mean, Great Road is a lot better than it was some years ago.
Yeah, but that was eleven years ago. I was part of that.
It was eleven?
It's eleven years ago. It's twenty ten, I remember.
Well, I remember we were building the school and, and they were trying to create, you know, bike paths to get green points and it was like, uh.
And our, our sidewalk fund is, is almost limited. And we just, you know, giving the Planning Board more tools to negotiate with the Velvet, I think is a great idea. But it will reduce the amount that they will get for the sidewalk.
Right, well, that's.
This is all just.
But that's all back to the conversation to have with Planning Board on some of these issues, right?
I just want to see us involved in this, these genuine policy questions.
Yeah, great. And Megan, not, not last, but.
No, I, I think a lot of this stuff, these are priorities that I have as well, right? Water, I have been banging that drum. Jim will tell you, I've been banging that drum since we first met. And it would be great if we could actually get some movement this year. I, I love the Be a Better Neighbor program because I do think that there is going to have to be some, some kind of understanding, right? It's, if we want to, if, if we want to have a district that can thrive with businesses, it's only going to thrive if the neighboring, if the neighbors approve and, and can feel, you know, that, that they're not getting completely screwed. And, what else was I going to say? Yeah, so I, I really like that idea. I like tying up the policies, the entertainment policy, the liquor license one. Always makes me nervous because I have people that come to me and they're like, oh, we want to do X, Y, and Z. Like, I had someone who was proposing doing some kind of a festival. And I was like, oh, you know, we're finally getting these policies down so that we can, so this is an easy thing for you to be able to do and it's not just like a pie in the sky idea. So, yeah, I, I, I would, and I feel like these are all achievable, you know, and if water is not finished, but it is, it is something that we can move towards over the next year. And, um, yeah, I think, not to piggyback on everything, but being the last person often means that all the good ideas come first. But, but yeah, I think that's.
We have a theme, I think, pretty clear. So that's great. Yeah, so it does sound like, I mean, I think the capital, there's sort of an umbrella of capital questions. And the question is, should we, you know, do we start with, you know, asking Capital Planning to come? Not to, we were talking with them and finance in December, but that's more about the budget. I think maybe, you know, we could have, just have them come and have this conversation about like, what are the different ways, and maybe asking the highway superintendent to come? I mean, in terms of having that conversation about like, sort of a different ways to think about our capital needs, both in terms of equipment, but then it gets into these bigger things like water and, and the big building projects. You know, whether it's town hall or high school or even, I mean, Stowe Acres, it's sort of, that's a different issue. That's, that's more, um, I mean, that's a really big financed, longer term town issue. Like, how do we, how do we plan for all these things? How do we get everything we want? Can we get everything we want and, you know?
I think that's a really good point. It's, it is about trying to get everything we want and, and, and laying things out so that we can get to this end goal of what, of what we like. I, yeah, I, any, anytime we can have a five-year plan for anything. I am such a big proponent of a, some kind of a plan, so.
Well, for me, this, I think the issue is, you know, what are our funding possibilities? I mean, sort of like when we had the Lower Village Congress Walk with Sarah Eldridge and Representative Hogan. It was like, what funds are out there that we might be able to tap into?
Right.
That works for some things, maybe more like the water project, maybe even some of the, I, I don't know, I actually don't have any idea what funds are out there, but I think that that's part of the issue too, is, yeah.
I, I, I believe in a five-year plan too, but sometimes you just have to seize the day. If, and I, I happen to think that the, and it'll be interesting to get the Town Minister's thoughts on Sunday night when she could speak. If this is not necessary. If the, if the federal infrastructure bill passes, which, and the likelihood of that changes every day. That may make the water issue even more timely. But I also think, especially if that passes, it's also timely for another reason that I just want to get out there. There seems to be a growing consensus among those involved in town government and elsewhere about how arbitrary and capricious DEP can be because of the whole PFAS issue. So, as Megan will tell you, my, the, the drum I've been banging for years is, I don't care about the solution to water. I want a solution. I just don't want to be involved with DEP. And I think the combination of money and what I perceive to be a consensus about DEP might make this an extremely timely issue.
And, I mean, the argument would be that the more we do some talking and thinking about it now, if that money comes, then we're ready for it.
Yes.
Sort of like this, the big intersection.
Well, it's, a lot of projects we're getting funded with ARPA funds for other towns around us because they had shovel-ready projects. And not that we could have seen five years ago that we were going to have a global pandemic and all of this money and all of these things. But I think, you know, now is the time to get, to get working on a plan.
Right.
So that we, you know, we can do it.
I just want to make a quick comment because I'm definitely in favor of having plans.
Yes.
But also I know that they, I mean, you know, the plans that I'm building on right now have all these scribbles on them. So, you know, plan is, is a start. And it, it's really just jumping off for conversation sometimes and has to be mutable.
Having a framework to be able to work from, I guess, even more than just a co-herm plan.
Well, I mean, I'm just thinking about, you know, sometimes people are, sometimes I've heard conversations where there's some reluctance to make commitments that for, you know, perhaps, you know, a group that won't be the same members going forward.
Right.
And I think that we, it's always good to, to do what we can and trust that whoever's next will also do what they can and do their best, you know.
Fair.
We did put, one of Denise's goals is on our longer-term goal was Lower Village, including the options for water supply. So, you know, things change quickly where we think it could actually be a funding option this year, but.
Well, that's just me. I mean, we should talk, we should talk to her, but it's just us reading the newspaper.
Yeah, right. Well, and as we all know, it's changing every day. Yeah.
One of the things that I, I think I heard you say, Ellen, and I really agree with it, is about sort of helping folks also understand. And I think you mentioned in your bonding of CPA funds, which I know CPA had a conversation on. It was actually just fantastic knowledge to gain, that that was A, possible, B, what it looked like, C, what are the strings attached to it? You know, and I think that part of this is of setting ourselves up to also be able to have the conversation about what funds exist and know that we're not committing to any of them and that because we're having a CPA bond night doesn't mean we're going to move forward with it. But I think we should also be working as a, as a board to communicate that these items are meant for this longer-term goal and that we shouldn't be scared about throwing things, you know, on the agenda that are educational sessions for us to continue to, to do what we have to do, especially when we get into some real, like, that conversation with the gentleman that did that last year was just incredible. You know, it was just an hour where you walked away going, wow, I, I think I actually got this really complex, you know, process and I can now start to make educated decisions on what that may look like rather than talking about it conceptually. Uh, and so, you know, I'd like to see us think about or, you know, maybe work with Denise on what funds, you know, could exist and try to start to see how can we start to fill in experts to start to fill us in on, on what that looks like with educational materials and being able to first get that. So that way, as you said, we have some, some succession planning where if new folks are coming on the board, we have all of this educational material. You can actually sort of step in and, and do that. And we can start to make sure that when we're needing to make these decisions on the fly or adapt quickly, we have the ability for, for folks to, to step up. So I'd love to see that being a core theme that I think we could start to build this year, which I think would help, you know, Capital Planning, Finance Committee, you know, CPC, us, you know, other, as we're sort of navigating that about what options really exist as we're building this, this sort of plan as well. And I just wanted to comment on that because we've all sort of said it, but I think really focusing on that could be a really good starting use while we're trying to build that next framework, you know, what are our options first? And then how are we going to start to pivot to getting tangible things on paper of what that looks like?
Well, I think also, I would add, not only those committees, but any building committee, I mean, including the high school. Pushing whoever's representing us, saying, you know, make sure you guys are looking out there for what other funds might be available. And maybe they've done that, but, you know, just to make sure that that's sort of the theme, that source of money, you know, who knows where it might show up, so. I'm going to call on our member, Katie, our member, our resident, our, our.
Resident alien?
Yes, yes. Anyway, Katie.
Just a quick question, the master plan, the ten-year plan that we're behind on, do you appoint that or do you?
No, the Planning Board.
Planning Board.
Planning Board does. They've been talking about, and I think that's an important part of this.
Yes, right. And that was one of the things we had mentioned at our work meeting in July. It was like, yeah, make sure that, the various things, master plan, bylaw review, charter review, all started to get going. Which I, I've put in some emails, but I haven't heard anything.
When we have our meeting with the Planning Board, that will come up because I've talked to Lori about that. Yeah.
Do you have to have that for the funding for some of these things for the state and the federal grants? Do you have to have a plan in place, especially for housing? That was just.
That's an excellent question. I, I don't know the answer. I wouldn't be surprised.
So for affordable housing, you have the housing production plan.
But they usually do that as part of or as a result of master plan work, is what I've heard. It's somehow tied together.
Conjunction. I don't know. Yeah.
Thank you.
So, thanks.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to say, yes, I agree with Zach that I feel as though part of these conversations are about our getting educated and just getting, just talking to the different groups, the different stakeholders so that we begin to just open the conversation for collaboration, is kind of the way I see it. Before we worry about like getting a decision made, we need to, we need to brainstorm a little with whoever, you know, about whichever thing it is, whether it's, you know, the way we fund highway capital things or, or the way we fund or the way we use the buildings that are, are not currently able to be used in town or how their use is allocated. There's tons of conversations that.
Right.
I don't feel our goals, but the, the, the collaboration is the goal.
Right. So I'm, I'm wondering, just staying on the, sort of this topic of capital and creative thinking, whatever. It's basically the same group that do committees that we want to meet with about the budget. And we've scheduled that for the early part of December. Given how time flies, should we, instead, we had said half of that meeting was going to be our planning and half the meeting was going to be a joint sort of finance capital meeting. Maybe, maybe instead of doing it that way, half of it is around this upcoming budget season and the other half is this sort of longer-term thinking. Because I, I just think realistically to try to schedule a second time with them, certainly before then, isn't going to happen. Looking at our schedule. Does that make sense or do we? Because it does seem like it's, you know, it's having that conversation with, with the right boards. I mean, it could be other boards could join us, but, but I think those are the core people who should be in the room sort of having that conversation around how do we think creatively about the number of capital needs we have and ways to fund it.
Makes sense to me.
We don't have to, I mean, we don't have to decide that tonight, but just something to think about. I mean, I think, you know, we did come up with some things I think we can move on a little more, you know, they're not all huge, right? And as you said, there's something we can definitely get through. I mean, I think the entertainment policy one, given how well our Town Minister has done pulling out existing policies and we can look at other towns, as you said, that are maybe a little stricter or a little more meat to their policies than ours are.
I think she's working on that one.
Yeah, so I think that that.
Yeah, I had a general comment on this, which I think would be helpful, is I'm sure there are towns around us who have a lot of policies. And I think it would be great for us to maybe provide instruction to Denise to help us know what those look like. And then to help us prioritize those and start to move them through just on a general calendar. Because the more we can get ahead of some of these issues, when we have a policy, when it's raised, I think the better. And I think that that would be a helpful continuing conversation so then we don't run up to as many. And hopefully over the course of a year, two, or three, we are actually establishing a, a body of policies that then can be updated and maintained and actually like put on a website and people can see them. And, and I think that, that's how I'd like to approach these and I love starting with the entertainment policy, one-day liquor license. Like, we should start with the ones we know we need and then, well, let's start to develop that list behind it and maybe start to get them on the agenda based on what is the sort of next one up that, you know, you and Denise sit down and say, this looks like the next one that should be up unless, hey, do we want to talk about this? Yes? Okay, great, policy's made. And then we start to discuss the actual tidbits of the policy. I think that would be a really good running tally for our agenda.
Sort of like the police department, right? We just have a few more meetings, right?
Yep, yep.
Right. And that's, I mean, Joyce has put together a lot of the existing policies, you know, that exist and we, we just need to go through them and say, this can stay, this has got to be updated, this has got to go, you know, and, yeah. So, yeah, I think that's right. I do, I mean, one of the things that came up when I was reading our notes from before and it came up with a resident who called me, or I actually met him at an event a few weeks ago, was around the communication between boards. And I've actually had, I mean, I think we probably all get these calls from, it's like, well, I talked to Planning Board and they sent me to highway and then they sent me, and, you know, there's that kind of thing. And I think Denise's management meetings or, is that what they're called, management meetings, the senior team, whatever, has, is doing a lot to improve the communication among departments already. But it does feel like, you know, and maybe it's more from the resident side, the user side, like, how do, how do we explain to people who they need to talk to, you know? And, and then, you know, what do we do when someone says, well, they pushed me off to this one and then they pushed me, tried to push me back? And, you know, I, I don't know how, how we solve this problem, but I, I hear it enough that I feel like as the select board, we, we might have a role in fixing it or improving it.
It might be as simple as doing an FAQ page on the website. Seriously. I know that that sounds like it's very simple, but like, if you have a problem with X, Y, blah, 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 you should contact, like, and really simplify it so that it's not going to be somebody's specific complaint, but hopefully they'll be able to glean from the list of frequently asked questions, like who I should, who I should, like, I have a question about, I don't know.
A dog problem.
A dog problem, right. I have a dog problem. I have a question about my neighbor doing whatever. I have a question about, I don't know, I'm, now I'm on the spot. But, but I guess it would be just like a frequently asked question page that was able to easily link to different boards or whatever. It, I'm not saying it's going to be the end-all be-all, but it could provide a nice catch-all for people to do their own homework, basically. It's a start. I thought, you know, I was going to talk to so-and-so. And then if, if it doesn't work or they don't feel like they've gotten that information, then they can email the Select Board Office or they can email, whatever. But at least it's given them a starting point of, I can figure out who I think I need to contact because of this.
Right.
So I just thought of a great way to blow away the simplicity of that.
Yes. I mean.
Well, so taking the example of the dog problem.
Right.
So if you have a dog problem where there's, somebody's dog is in the street.
Right.
So you could call the police or the, or basically you want the animal control officer.
Yes.
But if you have a problem.
I found out.
But if you, what?
It's the Bucksboro PD who has the animal control officer for a year. So.
Right.
But I only just.
But if you have a problem with a dog, you're walking on, on, in town. But if it's, but if you have a problem with a dog, you're walking on concert, on, on, in town forest and a dog rushes you and jumps on you and it scares you or you don't like dog poop, well, that's the conservation department.
Right.
And so you have dog problem branches to, is it this or is it this, you know? Um, but I mean, I wonder if there isn't a way to just have a couple of simple, like, you know, so, under dog problems. You know, under dogs, you have, you know, this kind of thing and that, you know, so here's this jurisdiction, here's this, so it's still somewhat.
Anyway, I, yes, Jim.
Let's not look for a problem that doesn't exist.
Okay.
Um, I think the FAQs is a great idea because when I go to either a state website or a town, a, a municipal website, I don't understand their jargon and I wanna know exactly what am I, you know, I have a certain problem, where do I go? Where do I start? At least. Um, but the fact that people get bounced around from department to department could actually be a good thing. Because there are many things that are interdisciplinary and that just shows that people are working well together. You do wanna, I would think, you wanna make sure that phone calls are being returned. That's completely separate. But I don't think there's anything wrong with, and I, you know, I hear stories of questions that start off in one department and have to go to another department, then have to go to a third department. And I actually think that that's a, a sign of something that's working well. Um, as long as people get.
The answer.
The answer and people are picking up the phone or returning phone calls relatively quickly. The other thing you always wanna keep in mind, and I think we just appropriated money for it, is permits.
Right.
Cause in the past, we have definitely had permits come in, sits in one department's inbox for too long.
Right.
But I think we've made, I think Denise has made a big inroads with whose help, Craig's, I think, somebody's.
Yeah.
Um, that's something you always wanna keep in mind, but, you know, I, and then there's always people who shop for an answer.
That's absolutely, I've heard, I've got those calls too, you can tell. Sometimes you can tell those.
Right.
But, yes, go ahead.
Um, I wanna say something that I think Denise is raising her hand, but my comment is just really simple about your communication thing too, is like, let's not forget about bringing boards here to also work collaboratively. And I think we haven't done that in the last couple of meetings and I think we should try to make that like our policies, like
Yep.
For ten minutes, whatever that is, that we can just, you know, make sure we have the time of, of trying to connect and communicate, especially with boards that we do often hear. You know, things may be a little late, you know, maybe it's a, a school board rep night trying to have them here, you know, really trying to think, make sure we're connecting and trying to just open up those lines of communication that way too, would I think help along with your FAQ along that idea. Um, but trying to bring them here and, and really starting to get that, you know, kind of working calendar put in place.
You have any priorities you'd like to hear from next?
I would like to hear from the school committee in light of the calendar and the building being put forward. I think it would sort of not only help us on understanding their process of, of the new school building with our capital discussions, uh, but also trying to make sure that there's a line of communication open with a new private school coming in, that we are ensuring communication as best we can and, and, um, so, so that would be an, another one that we haven't talked about in the past with the list that we've made, uh, in terms of who we thought we would like to hear from.
Okay. Denise, I'm sorry, I missed that you, you wanted to say something.
That's okay. Um, so a couple of things. So we do have stuff on our website, the how do I section, which is sort of the equivalent of the FAQs. Um, we've also just added Joyce's collected information for residents for our new residents so that they can go on there and find information, if they're new to town, how to do things. Um, a lot of this comes down to though, is getting departments and boards to submit information to us. So for the new residents or FAQs, we don't know what people are asking the town clerk's office. We don't know what people are asking the building department regularly. So, some departments have much more forthcoming and available to provide information to us. And as we get it, Joyce is putting it up on the website. But we are actively going through those processes um, to make the website more user-friendly and more available, so people can go there first and foremost. Um, secondly, once Dolores gets through the initial HR stuff, uh, part of her position is constituent services. So she can be that phone call when people don't know where to go. It will be to call her and say, you know, where do I go for a dog? Um, and then she can triage that appropriately and follow up and make sure that they got a response, um, make sure they've heard back from folks. So, she's still dealing with a, um, a, a mountain of HR problems that she walked into. So I would say, but we have talked about how she's going to track that, um, how she's going to detail those calls that come in, so that she can herself, um, follow up. So, that is all in the works. Um, I encourage everyone to go to our website. Um, they're welcome to call here, but we put as much information as we can on our website to make that as available and accessible twenty-four seven to our residents.
I, I'd like to make one quick comment, which is that our website has changed, our, our social presence has changed a, a ton over the last, and this is a process because, because boards and committees, um, in some cases may not be used to being able to have a lot of information there and have good access to their pages. And so, um, and, and depending on, on staffing or, or, you know, volunteer levels and skill sets, it takes a while to get everything full-fledged, but it's amazing how much it's changed. Kudos to Denise.
Yes.
Even if she can't speak.
And it's funny. It's funny, cause I was looking on the website, like, when we were talking about the FAQs, I'm like, where, it's like, I know it's in there somewhere. It's like, oh, right, the button at the top that says, how do I? So, um, so I will assign everybody on the board, um, to look at that list and see if there are things you feel like are really
Yeah, absolutely.
blatantly missing, you know, to send it to Denise and she can talk to those departments and say, see, we noticed that this could be added. So, um, that's your, that's your homework, so, um, but yeah, yeah, it is hugely better, so. And it's exciting to hear that that's in the works anyway, for constituent services will be great. Um, okay, I think, um, we will, I'll, I'll talk to Denise more about, you know, the next steps on the, the policy side and particularly on the, um, the entertainment slash one-day licenses, cause that comes up soon anyway and we'd like to get that in terms of license generally. Um, I mean, the liquor stuff comes up at the end of the year anyway, so, um, we will, more next time. Um, anything, any other final thoughts on the, on our planning work plans?
I just have one, which is, um, I, I would love for us to get something on paper like the board, select board goals we've seen from other towns, that have been, I think, incredible for residents to see what we are trying to prioritize. And that's, if something's out on there and they're, you know, to raise it to us, they can, I think it would just help with that back and forth dialogue as we build out.
Yep.
So I'd love to see if we can try to start to move towards something like this and I would love to see it like the next meeting or the one after us pulling those together and starting to make that.
Yeah, I think we can put something together from, from what our discussion was tonight. We clearly have a list and I think, you know, the same way that we did it with Denise and now it's on her website, so, her webpage, yeah, agreed. Um, okay, um, so meeting minutes, back to the, um, mundane, the, uh, of September twenty-eighth. Were there any changes or questions on it? Just once again, amazing that A, we only have one set, cause we're up to date and it's nice to have them all there and complete and a great record.
Nicely done.
If no other, uh, comments, I will take a motion to approve.
I move we approve the minutes of the September twenty eighth, twenty one, twenty-one meeting, um, as drafted.
All say.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
I'll abstain on that one.
Oh, you abstained because you were not there, okay. Okay. Um, correspondence. Um, we didn't have any, though we did get the email about the Mass Municipal Association Conference in January. And for those who haven't gone, I found it amazingly helpful. Um, it's just a chance to informally meet with other select boards from other towns. And then there's, I, I found the workshops are great, so, um, if people are interested, I have registered already. Did you get that email? You should have gotten, if you didn't.
It may have gotten.
Sure we got that one. Yeah. Um, so there was no other correspondence. So that being said, it's eight thirty-eight. Do I hear a motion?
Show move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you all. Denise, go home, get some sleep.